Twenty-third Policy and Education Subcommittee meeting. Before we dive into our agenda, I'm going to give a couple of quick updates on topics that are not on the agenda. The first one is the issue before us around the mascot. So the mayor has had a couple of conversations with tribal leader Fairies Gray from the Massachusetts tribe. And at Monday's school committee meeting, he is going to give us an update on those conversations that he has had during the policy subcommittee update time. So, once we hear from him as to what that update is, we'll discuss there what our next steps are. And let's plan to meet again next week so that we can keep that moving. The other update I'd like to give is about our resolution for diversity, equity, and inclusion. So, as people may recall, we started with the boilerplate MASC anti-racism resolution, and we began to the process of customizing it to be more particular to Braintree and really enhancing it, I think. Dr. Hackett was kind enough to bring that to the BPS Diversity Steering Committee, and they provided some comments on it that I am just about finished incorporating. So, I appreciated them taking the time to give us some feedback. So, I'm working on an updated draft of that, and I will share it through you, Dr. Hackett, to the members of this subcommittee either this evening or more likely first thing tomorrow so that folks can start taking a look at that.
Right, thank you.
And then we will give an update on that on Monday at the school committee meeting, what are our processes on that, and when we plan to bring it to the committee for the first reading, which I think will be quite soon. I think it's pretty close. So, with that said, we'll move on to our second agenda item, which is consideration of BPS diversity recommendation on BHS administration titles. And I'm going to assume that one is going to be handled by you, Dr. Hackett.
Actually, I'm gonna let Mr. Lee handle it.
Oh, okay.
He's the actual co-chair of the district-wide diversity committee, so...
Oh, sorry about that, Mr. Lee.
No, 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 no.
I thought about your much...
You were right to come to me first, I just wanna, you know, say that.
It's like asking a parent's permission.
Yeah.
From the steering committee and from conversations that we have had, not only at that meeting but previously as well, we had a long conversation about the administrative titles at the high school, including headmaster and housemaster. And it is the sentiment of the steering committee and the members of the steering committee that we would be best served by changing those titles to something more in line with the titles that we have at other schools in the district, including both middle schools, to a principal and assistant principal. That although the term, head terms, headmaster and housemaster do come from old English terminology around teaching, it is construed and felt to be a harbinger of the past of slavery and in that way offensive to many of our students of color. So, you know, the steering committee felt strongly that this is something that we could do that is easy, that is more consistent with what we do in other buildings, would help to make some of our students feel more welcome in our facility, and that we should entertain this change as soon as possible.
Okay, great. Thank you for that update.
I would just add to that that I have been in conversation with Dr. Scully, and he's certainly in agreement. He actually came from, to us as you know, is from Taunton, which was one of the other school systems in the state that had, was retaining the title of headmaster and housemaster, which they did change a little while ago. And then, you know, in the larger context, there aren't many public schools that use that terminology or titles for their administration in the state. In fact, I can't off the top of my head, I don't know how many, but it's absolutely under a handful, so it would certainly be consistent. And I do know also, just talking to Dr. Scully, when he goes to a conference or workshop or a regional principals' meeting, and they kinda go through and do some introductions, he already introduces himself as principal of Braintree High School because, you know, it does sound a little pretentious when you're sitting in the room, you know, to call yourself the headmaster. So, we are, they're all, everyone's good with that change. We certainly administratively support the recommendation of the diversity subcommittee, steering committee, excuse me. And then talking to Dr. Scully, you know, he believes and I support that probably the best alternative would be obviously principal of Braintree High School. And then, we do have three associate, three assistant principals, three housemasters currently to just change their title to assistant principal. And we are right now in agreement, we don't think, we don't believe that there's anything offensive about how we group kids based on house. The idea is that we have students split up into three houses to kinda make the learning environment a little bit smaller for them, that they are connected to a housemaster, as it's now called, and it, you know, try kind of a little bit of a, not necessarily a school within a school, but they are part of a community within what is a pretty big high school. So, the recommendation would be principal, assistant principal times three, and to retain house one, house two, house three.
Okay, great. I think that makes a lot of sense, I'm certainly in favor of this. Before we talk about process, are there any other questions or comments from the subcommittee?
If I may, Madam Chair.
Please.
I agree with all the comments that were put forward. I think, again, the intent of the titles was not, there wasn't ill-intent for the titles when they were brought forward years ago, but I can certainly understand the challenge with them. And I think that, you know, we would be doing the right thing by making that adjustment. So, I, you know, I appreciate the diversity committee looking at this and coming up with a recommendation, and I fully support it.
Great. Anything else? Okay, so then in terms of process, then, I assume we would be looking for a motion to make the adjustment to these titles, and that recommendation would go to the full school committee on Monday, is that right?
That's correct. And just to add one more thing, I actually, I have been in conversation with BEA president Kyle Fredericks as well on this because the titles are actually embedded within the collective and bargain agreement, and he and the membership are definitely certainly supportive of it. So, we would just need to make that change within the contract, and again, it's just a, it's a title change.
Okay, and is that something we would just authorize you to do, or is that something that we have to also include in our motion?
We would bring it back to, as a, either a side letter of agreement or memorandum of agreement, MOA, or we also have not yet published the updated contract, so we have an opportunity still to make that change prior to you doing the final ratification of the contract.
Okay, great. Okay, terrific. So, at this point, I will be looking for a motion to change the current titles of headmaster and housemaster to principal and assistant principal as recommended. Would anyone be willing to make that motion?
I will, so moved.
I'm looking for a second. All right, I'll second it myself. Let's do our roll call vote, Mr. Kokoris.
Aye.
Mr. Chief?
No.
And I vote aye. So, that means it moves to the greater school committee on Monday evening. Thank you. Okay, terrific, I'm glad, I'm glad that we're moving forward with that. So, let's move on to item number three, update and discussion on school reopening planning. I'm thinking this one goes to you, Dr. Hackett, but you guys could surprise me on this one too.
No, I will start and pass it off to Mr. Lee where, at certain points, or he can step in at any point certainly and either correct me or give some additional feedback, background. And I apologize to those of you who were on the last meeting that you're gonna have to hear this again, you do have the option of turning your volume off while I'm doing this if you are as tired as I am about hearing my own voice, so...
I'll fact-check.
Yeah, we'll talk to you later, Mr. Kokoris. So, as you know and as we presented to the school committee a while ago, we put in place a reopening steering committee that was going to come together, broad-based representation of teachers, administrators, parents, and other support people. We have had a couple meetings now of the steering committee, and underneath or as part of that process, we developed four working teams, essentially kind of subcommittees, that were facilities and operations, health and safety, teaching and learning, and special education and support services, so special services. So, those groups have also been meeting much more regularly than the steering committee, have made really good progress, and have had really good conversations in the absence of really clear direction from the Department of Education. So, you know, we upfront made a few, set up a couple of goals for us and for that work that we believe are most important as we go into next year. We talked a lot about the fact that obviously health and safety comes number one, and if there is something that we wanna do but we can't do for health and safety reasons, that, then we don't do it. That has to be the first test of any proposal or option that we bring forward eventually to the school committee. We also talked about the importance of equity being at the core of what we do. So, you know, we, I think, under the conditions last year, did a good job, in some cases did an outstanding job particularly with information technology in providing devices and hotspots for families that did not have them. We spent, as you know, a lot of time passing those out, setting them up, making sure people are connected. We provide technical support for families who are having trouble. And then on top of that, within a day, I think after we closed, we were up and running with Sarah Coughlin with the Food Services Department doing grab-and-go breakfasts and lunch, and you saw those numbers at your last school committee meeting, which were pretty extraordinary. So, you know, those are two examples of equity. You know, last year was a different situation because obviously we were full remote, and we went in so fast that there had been really no pre-planning for that kind of scenario. So, in many ways, we were, we were in development one day ahead of where we would have staff and teachers at. So, we were planning a day before the next day and getting it out, and the directors under Jim's leadership did really an extraordinary job getting us up and running, particularly in those first few weeks, you know, and it was, there was a lot to learn, we learned a lot. I would definitely say I am incredibly proud of our people and our teachers and how we pulled that together in short order, but I will also definitely say we fully recognize that, you know, it was not, not ideal. And, you know, it should go without saying that any time that our students are not in our buildings in front of our staff, that's not ideal. So, as we move forward and as we're planning for the opening of school, we did have a conference call with the commissioner on Wednesday, a statewide superdense conference call, Jim and I listened into that. Initially, when the department first came out, they were talking a lot about a lot of flexibility, choice, they were talking about six feet of physical distancing, they were talking about a lot of local control. That then fairly rapidly went in a different direction where we started hearing that, you know, it was gonna be much more directive. I, you know, I certainly appreciate and understand the pressures that the commissioner must be under, both from, you know, the people in the field and those he has to support, as well as from the governor's office and, you know, the legislature, and the pressures that come with that, and everyone has a certain interest and certain goals that don't necessarily match everyone else's. So, it's an incredibly complex problem, but on the last conference call, there was a lot more conversation about flexibility, and really kind of finally an admission of what we always knew to be true, which was, in the end, it's a local decision. The school committee ultimately is the deciding body for how the Braintree Public Schools will reopen next year, and that will be in coordination with the town health and building division. So, they are the ones that tell us if our plan makes sense and if it meets their requirements on what they consider to be safe and healthy, and then the school committee then makes the determination as to how, what option we're gonna, we're going to open with. So, with that, and with the commissioner's call, it really kind of became more clear that we were headed in the right direction. We had made some assumptions around the fact that we, we did know that it was really in the end, the local, a local decision that the commissioner was in charge or able to influence or the decider on certain components of regulations such as how many school days, student days in a year, how many, how much time on learning, and some other things that really are his, at his discretion, and can, he can enforce on any school system in the state. At the last, at the call on Wednesday, we learned that he is going to be taking us from 180 student day calendar to 175, which he had mentioned 177 at one point. To go to 175 is, I think, a great opportunity and a great decision so that we can get our staff in and trained, give them time to get their classrooms organized, get their feet back out of them, reconnect with their colleagues, undergo some professional development, get technology up and going. So, those five days are really critical and not, probably not enough, but they are critical to how we open. In addition to that, we have been talking a little bit about changing the calendar for next year, which I'll, I'll talk about in a second, but I just want to give you kind of a high-level overview of where we are in the planning. The other piece of guidance that the commissioner gave was something that we were already planning on, which was for transportation. The recommendation is for us to have one student per bench seat on buses and have them staggered. So, for example, when you walk onto a bus and you're looking down the aisle, you have bench seats on the right, bench seats on the left, we would have one student in each of those bench seats, and they would be staggered so that, let's say, the student on the right-hand side would be up against the window, and the student on the left-hand side would be toward the aisle, and then it would alternate back and forth throughout the bus all the way to the back. All students would be wearing masks, which was part of our planning, and we would have windows open all the time, to the extent practical, understanding that weather could be a factor. So, we had already, a couple weeks ago, been working with our transportation office, and as you know, we own our own buses, we own our own transportation, we don't contract out to anybody for that. So, it is our staff who are involved in this process, and they have been at the table with us as part of this overall steering committee. We have asked them to put together a scenario for what we would consider to be our worst case. So, we know how many buses we have, we don't yet know how many drivers are we have to start the year, in the same way that we don't know how many staff we have, depending on their own health conditions. But, we've asked for a look at a scenario that puts, that follows the staggered seat guidance. That gets us to about 25-ish kids, 26 kids or so on, on a bus. Our priority is, across the board, is to get our, certainly our district-wide services and students in, into school every day. And our other priority, district-wide, is to provide a, an everyday program for students from our pre-K all the way up to whatever grade level we can get to. You know, we initially were hopeful that we could get to grade five, but numbers don't necessarily look like they, they may work to do that for a full, in-depth, I'm sorry, everyday program for those students, but we are committed to getting as many of the lower elementary grade levels in for everyday instruction as possible. So, we asked the Transportation Department to do a couple of things. One, state law does not require us to transport grades seven through 12. There is no law, the law does not require the district provide transportation grades seven through 12, we've obviously always done it, and the law does not require us to pick up students who are more than two miles away from the school. So, we, again, looking at our worst-case scenario from both, just a, you know, a service to students and families scenario, to see how do we do this, we asked that Transportation Department, look at, take a school and run routes to get students who are more than two miles away from that school to school, and how many students would that be, assuming that they all come back, which is not the case, and assuming that they all are gonna ride the bus, which we know is not, isn't currently the case and likely to be not the case next year, and to ask the question about how do we get everybody in that school to that school at the same time for start time? They're working through that scenario right now. You know, what we know is likely at certain schools, it's gonna be 10 buses for one run to get all the students to the school. So, we have 40 buses, you can do the math, if that's what it takes, then we have to have a conversation around, you know, do we need to stagger start times? Is our, is our goal to do, as we have done in the past, to transport students who are less than two miles to the school? Are there certain equity questions that we need to answer for certain families? And on top of that, we know that certainly when we talk about the middle schools, even though we don't have to transport grades seven and eight, we would want to at least transport grades five and six as we're required to do, but we also would like to, you know, go up the ladder and how many grade levels we can transport safely. So, once we have that information, we'll be able to kind of extrapolate out and see, take an estimate of how many students we think are gonna ride, and then we will have to make determinations on what that has implications for start times. That work will continue to happen over the next few weeks. We know parents are anxiously awaiting a lot of decisions around this, and we are very appreciative of their patience, and, you know, I think all of you who are on this group know how complicated the problem is that we're trying to solve. So, with that, we've, from a high, again, high-level overview, we are looking to, again, get a, an everyday schedule for pre-K through whatever grade level we can get to, and then we've made a determination just from a number standpoint and also from understanding that students at the higher grade levels have a little bit more, are more independent and can take care of themselves, that in partly from space issues, that we would be doing a hybrid model for grades seven through 12. We'll have several, sorry, I just had to take it right, we'll have several options on hybrid to present, but it will, they will all look like something like student, a group of students, let's say half, are in the building together one day, that same group of students is working remotely the following day. When they work remotely, we bring in the other half of students to be in class in school instruction. There are a few different ways, we've been talking about it, which we will bring forward to the public, to the community, next, with the staff next week, to, you know, get some feedback and input on, there are pros and cons for all of them. We also are looking to see if we are able to create a schedule that does not, to start anyway, put us in a situation, we have to figure out how to serve students lunch. So, whether they're in a, an everyday schedule or the hybrid schedule, our goal is to get to a reasonable point in the day where we can give kids breakfast, snacks, snacks during the day, kind of keep the cafeteria or the, or the kitchen kind of open, so they kind of graze. We've already bought some rolling carts, as you know, Sarah Coughlin is amazing, so we have bought some rolling carts that can be rolled through the hallway for students to grab snacks throughout the day, and then we would be looking at providing students with a grab-and-go lunch at dismissal. So, that is the current option we're looking at in terms of the length of the day and in food. We are very much, we are very concerned about the idea of, one, bringing a lot of kids together in a cafeteria for obvious reasons, and we're also very concerned about having students eat in classrooms in terms of a full lunch because we know that that can create other issues for us in terms of pest control, which we, you know, at times struggle with and have a contract for that we run year-round to mitigate. So, that's how we're thinking about the actual length of the day. Obviously, that is very high-level conceptual, no decisions have been made on any of this. And then, of course, we need to be ready for a possibility of, one, a full remote option, whether things change so dramatically between now and September that that's how we have to start, or whether when we're into the school year, if we have to go to a full remote because there are issues with the virus that are trending in a bad direction. And we also know that we're gonna have students who are, families who are not gonna feel comfortable sending their students back to school, either not comfortable or medically can't send them back. So, we will have a full remote option for all families, we've not yet talked about what the criteria may be for that. Clearly, if any kind of immunocompromised situation, either with the student or within the family, would be given first consideration, and then, you know, we would work through and really try to accommodate all families if they are not comfortable coming back for whatever reason, so that they can have a full remote option, which will look very different, and I'll let Mr. Lee talk a little bit about that than the spring, because we are gonna be grading, the work is gonna count, and it's gonna be, you know, a school, a regular, in quotation, school year from the standpoint of standards and expectations. I will stop talking for a moment and have Mr. Lee hop in, because I'm sure I've missed some things in terms of the higher-level overview.
You just want a break, I know how it goes.
Totally.
And as Frank described, we're kind of looking at two separate populations that we'd be dealing with. One is the population of students and families that are truly, for whatever the reason, uncomfortable sending their children back to school and having a full remote option for that cohort. And, you know, we've looked in terms of what we can do internally, using synchronous instruction and Google Meets and some asynchronous instruction similar to the spring, but we've also looked at outside organizations that could provide us learning platforms that might be able to supplement that work to provide a more well-rounded opportunity for those kids who are at home, and so that work continues. But that, we, again, we view that as one population. When we talk about those families and students who might be uncomfortable coming back to the schools, we also understand that there's gonna be some percentage of the staff members that will feel similarly, again, for medical reasons or for other very valid reasons that would prevent them from returning, and we hope to marry the two groups at some level so that, you know, teachers who are unable to come to school can work directly with students who are unable to come to school. Some of that is still to be determined as we identify, one, who the kids are and who those families are that can't return, but at the same time, who the teachers are and what do they teach, at what level do they teach, what subjects, because we'd obviously have to figure out, do we have the right people in the right spots to be able to provide all of that? So, that is work that is continuing. As Frank explained, that there's working groups underneath the steering committee around teaching and learning. One, one group for each level is a high school group, a middle school group, and an elementary group, and these are conversations that they're having and the research that they're doing to identify, again, what other resources can we bring to bear with that population of kids who might not be returning to the school. Then there is the group that is returning to the school, and, you know, as we discussed briefly in the last meeting, to extend possible at the elementary and the middle school levels, we would be looking to cohort students, put them into groups that would travel together to minimize interactions with other students, and ideally provide some movement for them as well. You know, I think, I can't possibly imagine a middle school student wearing a mask sitting in the same chair for five hours in a given day, particularly in September when it's warm. So, the ability to move kids around and being able to do it safely by keeping them with the same students they've been with all day would be advantageous to us, and that's something we're exploring at the middle schools and the elementary schools. Gets a little trickier at the high school. Obviously, the high school program is a little bit more diverse, and students take a variety of different courses that can take them all over the building. We'd be hesitant to move away from that model as our students need some of those opportunities as they apply to colleges and things beyond high school that are specific to them as individuals, but we would look to minimize traffic in the school itself and to the extent possible, minimize movement between classes, understanding that they are gonna have, they are gonna have to shift classes because almost nobody takes the exact same program at the high school. So, those are a couple pieces to it. As Frank also explained, whether it's the full remote option or the hybrid option, we will be taking attendance in classes, we will be issuing real grades that will go on transcripts and student records, and we will develop assessments in both platforms to ensure that we are monitoring student progress in a way that allows us to grade them effectively, which is obviously different than the spring. And the working groups are having long conversations about exactly what does that look like. You know, some of the guidance from the state speaks to, that is a requirement. You know, some of the guidance from the state speaks to, that is a requirement, particularly around attendance and grading, and we'll be in a position to fulfill that need as we move forward. Very similarly to what I explained with respect to the full remote courses at the high school level, we're also looking at other available resources. You know, we often use private schools, not private schools, online virtual schools. Keystone is an example of one for kids who either need to take a class we're no longer offering or want to take the class that we just don't offer, but the student really needs to take it. And we subcontract with, with organizations on an individual basis for things like that. We would explore that option as we get a better sense of teachers that are returning and not returning. There's, you know, scenario where certain classes might not be able to run because the instructor can't come to the school. So we would explore that as an option as well, and we've had those conversations in the high school working group. So obviously, there's a lot of work that remains to be done. You know, the cohorting at the lower levels to us maintains the safety that is paramount to what we need to accomplish. And what we are looking to do at the high school is to keep the kids in the programs that they need to be in in order to be successful after they leave Braintree High School, while at the same time keeping them as safe as possible as they are in the buildings. At the high school and the middle school and the elementary, a lot of the conversation relates for those students who are coming to school, for those teachers to be able to move seamlessly from a hybrid model into a full remote model if the circumstances dictate it and the virus takes a strange turn. So we are looking at available resources to ensure that our teachers are ready to go into a synchronous style of instruction, should that be the case, that we have to go fully remote. And we'll be in a position to be able to do that. While we prepare for that, as I mentioned in the previous meeting, we've also purchased some software that will make it easier on parents of younger students and even older kids who might not be tech savvy, to have a one-stop login so they can access all their applications in one place after they've logged into that, that particular site, to make it a little bit easier as they navigate the various platforms that we use instructionally across the district. So those are some of the things that we're working on right now. Obviously, there's a lot that still needs to be done. As Frank indicated, a lot of that really is the next step in our process, which is identifying students and families and their, their intent for returning in the fall. And with that information, we'll be able to take the next steps in our planning.
Thank you, Jim. Just to take one more step back in case I did not mention it, we are planning for six feet of physical distancing between students within classrooms. Obviously, that has a significant impact on the number of students that we can put into each classroom. We are, are going to require masks, understanding that the, at the lower elementary K1, 2, that's going to be more of a challenge, so we better remain flexible with how we implement that. Certainly, we want students to have mask breaks. Certainly, we want students to get outside and get fresh air within the program, within the schedule. All those things are under consideration. And we also now have to think about, you know, there are compromises with everything and there's no, there is no perfect plan. What we are trying to do is, is come up with the best plan that has the most impact on, for our students and families and teachers as possible. We are prioritizing our special education district-wide programming as being programs that would be no matter what grade level in attendance every day. And we have tried to accommodate that with our planning. We know right now for, for almost all buildings, we know exactly what the total student capacity is at six feet of physical distancing. And as you know, certainly, the number of students that we can get into any particular school is quite, is far less than the numbers that we have in each school now. So some of this will have to be decisions around our priorities and our goals and our values and, you know, because if we're talking about getting from pre-K to some grade level within the elementary spam for a, an everyday schedule, there are going to be some sacrifices that are going to have to be made, some compromises, some, some fairly, in some cases fairly significant changes depending on the options. And it's just going to have to be a conversation about, you know, you as a school committee and then, you know, with, with input, obviously, that, what, what makes the most sense? And we know and our priority is to get kids back into school. And we understand fully, all of us being parents ourselves, that that is not without some level of risk as is when we, any of us go anywhere right now to do anything. So, you know, there's certainly, for some parents and families, it's a question of risk, kind of risk tolerance. And, you know, we completely appreciate and respect that and want to give as much choice as possible. The other thing that we want to make sure that we do, and this was always the concern about going to three feet of physical distancing, we don't want every one of our buildings stuffed to get to everyone being able to return. So either at three feet or six feet, we've been very conscious about not scheduling larger spaces like cafeterias and gymnasiums, media centers with actual classrooms, because we believe that flexibility is going to be key, that, you know, there are going to be, I really do believe that every day is going to look different. You know, every day, we're going to be having to figure out some challenge within each of our buildings. And if we don't have the flexibility to adapt quickly, then we, you know, we're selling ourselves short and creating other unintended problems for ourselves in terms of what we do with children when they're with us. The, our school nurse director, Gina Albaazi, has been directly involved with us. We have been in contact, regular contact with Mary Beth McGrath at the town of Braintree around health and safety issues. They will be the ones that will allow us to return ultimately. And they are the ones that are, will be looking at our plans and saying, yes, this looks good, or you need to do X, Y and Z, as they are all the time. They have the authority to shut a building down, for example, if they have health, health and safety concerns. So they will be the first sign off on whatever we come up with for options. And then the school committee ultimately is the governing body that makes the decision. So as we've talked about our space and capacity within our buildings and how we want to, what kind of option we want to go with, we have also been in discussions and walked through St. Francis on Monday. That facility is available to us to lease for the year if we are interested. I can tell you that we are definitely interested. I don't, you know, we're kind of in a situation where we can't really have enough space. We have received a grant that is for COVID relief that will provide us about $1.2 million for any COVID-related expenditures, including how the things that we need to do to adjust and adapt for opening school. So the, the lease cost, for example, would be covered, would be grant-eligible. We are just in the initial phases of that. We walked the building, there are 14 classrooms, you know, a rough count at six foot physical distancing. We are, we're looking at probably around 200 students that we could put in that building. Again, the health department and building division would have to sign off on that being used as a space. I think people understand that, you know, this is an extraordinary situation. So I think, you know, we, we know that this is hopefully short-term, but it is a really good option for us. We did talk to the finance and operations subcommittee before, before this meeting, and we will update the school committee on Monday night. We have not entered in any kind of formal negotiations, obviously, without your approval to do so. But also, we want the town health department to go through the building with us to give us their thoughts on what would need to be done. We are also have purchased well over 30,000 masks at this point. Our plan would be that students and families would, and teachers would supply them their own mask. We have, I know we have a lot of families who would want to buy their own mask, wash them, that kind of thing. And, but we then would distribute to families in need or students in need, students who've lost it on the bus or wherever they might have, whatever they might have done with it, used it as a slingshot and broke it. And we'll provide them with, have mask on hand to provide them. We have also purchased the appropriate cleaning supply solutions for, that are effective on, on the virus for disinfecting. And we have purchased over 10 backpack units that are sprayers, that spray at a finer, a mist, more of a mist sprayer to be used within classrooms on, in bathrooms and on buses as well. That is a spray that kills the virus, but it also dries in 10 minutes or so and does not need to be wiped, which is, will allow us to do any regular-sized classroom in about two minutes on high-touch surfaces, because obviously we have to be as efficient as possible. We've bought face shields and other material and protective equipment for our staff as well. And we are still, you know, talking to teachers, the teachers association about all this. And we've been working hand-in-hand with them. They're, they've been really exceptional with us and really trying to work this problem with us. They obviously have their own challenges from their state organization that is pushing on certain priorities. And they understand that, you know, we all collectively have our own priorities around how we want to do this and getting kids back. So just, oh, also just want to mention that we are, we are contracting, we have contracted for a company to come in and do air exchange testing in, in all of our classrooms. That will begin as early as tomorrow so that we know what the flow rate is of, or the exchange rate is of fresh air into each classroom space. As you know, we have multiple interior classrooms at the high school. That doesn't mean that they cannot be used. We want to make sure the exchange is appropriate or meets standard. We also recognize that we can't have a group of kids that are occupying a rooms with no windows for the entire day, going back to the point that Jim just made about cohorting students. So we're conscious of that as well. And then finally, what we want to talk to you about tonight too is number four on the agenda, is some possible revisions of the 2020-2021 school year calendar. So I think that's probably more detail than you may want, maybe it's not. So I'm going to stop there and if people have questions or want me to cover anything else, be happy to do so.
Thank you for that comprehensive update. I mean, obviously, this is the hot topic for all parents everywhere right now. So I am on the school reopening committee and on one of the teaching and learning subcommittees or working groups for middle school. And the amount of detail and just stuff that's to be worked through in a very short period of time is pretty staggering. But I've been continually impressed and not surprised at the care and conscientiousness that the staff and administration and teachers and everyone participating is putting into all of this. I mean, it's real tangible things that we've been talking about, how to make schedules work, what classes are more suitable for remote versus what should be in person, how to work specials in, so that they aren't necessarily remote, which is one of my little, you know, little items that I love to talk about. So it's really been very impressive, the amount of work that's been going in. So I have a couple of questions. One is you had, you had said here, the goal is to get K through something back in the building every day to some degree and then hybrid for seven to 12. Even at a broad strokes level like that, is there a plan for an imminent parent communication so that parents can start planning? You know, knowing things can change on a dime, I think, while that would need to be said, I think people know that. But what is the status of letting parents know that that's the plan?
So the status of letting parents know that that's the plan is, is next week. Our intent next week is to start communicating with staff first through the BEA and directly about what the options look like. And when I say options, I'm, you know, primarily talking about for students who will be in school program, what are those options look like, whether they are everyday return from one of grade levels? We can do that to the hybrid model for at least grades seven through 12. We, we do recognize that it will likely be more than just seven through 12 on the hybrid model at this point, based on the numbers. And also to talk through what the options for hybrid could be. For example, discuss, you know, we've had discussions about a week on, a week off, or a week remote, and then some version of an every other day remote learning, in-person hybrid plan. You know, we have our preference from the standpoint of what we think's important. We, and we will put our preference administratively in front of everybody. Obviously, we need to have discussions with the reopening steering committee. We're hoping to do most of that Monday prior to coming to the school committee Monday night to do the same thing and making any adjustments we might need to make based on our conversations with staff and the steering committee. At that point, have a discussion with, with the school committee, get some direction and input from you all as a body. And then our goal is to begin a pretty extensive and yet timely and efficient communication process with staff and parents. What we think is the priority for many parents is, first of all, the calendar, which we're discussing tonight. When is school going to start and what is the school year going to look like? We will discuss with you a couple of, some of our thinking on that in a few minutes. Parents obviously also need to know what the, what the schedule is and if there are childcare issues that are present for them, you know, how they are going to work that out. That is one of the considerations, we talk about the hybrid schedule. You know, where, you know, we have anecdotally received feedback that a, a one week on, one week off remote, you know, hybrid model is, would be more difficult for parents to find childcare. We don't know if that's necessarily true. So those are the conversations and input that we need to get. We are planning to do several Zoom community input sessions so that we can perhaps do it by level. So maybe we do a K3 or K2, however the numbers might work, that we can go through and have this conversation, explain and show the, the planning, the thinking, the options and get specific feedback. You know, hopefully maybe get some of those questions prior to, so that we can address them within the presentations to be more efficient. We have an interest in getting feedback from students, high school and middle school certainly, maybe, maybe a little bit lower than that. But they are obviously an important voice, you know, that we need to hear. So we are hopeful that we get out next week at minimum so that parents and staff know what are the possibilities with the calendar and trying to limit those possibilities to a couple and give a timeline as to when we'll make that decision. And then we also want to get nailed down the actual schedule for in, every day and remote hybrid learning so that people have a sense of what we're talking about and looking at. And then we'll continue to work on the issues of transportation and, you know, really be able to start bringing people in the process. Our biggest concern in all of this, and even though we have over 60 people involved in the process, and, and as, like anything, you know, people are going to say things, they're going to ask questions and then all of a sudden you start to get information out there that may be accurate, but maybe just part of a conceptual conversation that people start to hear and then they think there's a plan. So, but what we've not wanted to do is put out options that are not doable. You know, we don't want to be in a position where we say, this is our recommendation, here are the options we're looking at and have two of the three not even be possible. So we also will need to negotiate a memorandum of understanding agreement with the, with all of our working unions and associations as well around these, the final recommendation. So there's a lot of work to do around that as well. So, but to answer your question, I just want to fill it in a little bit more. You know, to answer your question, we are, our goal is to start the discussion next week. And we have to submit a preliminary plan to the Department of Education on the 31st. This is next Friday, in looking through what they're requiring. It's very preliminary, it does not lock us in anything. We're not overly concerned about having all, a high level of detail and have decisions completely made by Friday at all. They are looking for a final version of our plan in mid-August. You know, we hope to beat that timeline so that we can have a plan in place even a little bit before that if possible, or at least significant components decided upon before that timeline.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So just, just a couple of maybe information or clarification. So the communication about the options or the plans, I guess I just, I don't want us to get ahead of ourselves because they're still in consideration until we get to a final vote of the school committee, correct?
Sorry, I'm muted. Yes, that is correct. And even when we bring, when we bring the final recommendations to the school committee, it may be the case that we, that we are presenting, you know, several options, you know, that we believe are final options that you would need to have conversation, discussion around and then narrow down. So as much as we want to make final decisions and we recognize the importance of doing that for families, for staff and for students, you know, we're hopeful that we can make some of the major you know, we're hopeful that we can make some of the major components of the decisions early enough so that there's, they have time, people have time to plan. But in the end, it will not be approved until the Board of Health signs off on it and the school committee.
Yeah, you know, the only comment, and we talked about it a lot in the, in the previous meeting, is that there are, and the chair mentioned it as well, there's so many moving parts, and there's still some things that are, that are very unclear. So I just, you know, I understand the planning standpoint, but I want to make sure that, again, we don't, we don't put information out there that may change dramatically in some part of the option, so.
I mean, I definitely like that that's inevitable, though, because, you know, circumstances are changing so quickly. And I definitely appreciate that we don't want to put things out that could get completely blown out of the water and are just not feasible. But I think it's really important for us to communicate what we are thinking to parents. I feel like parents deserve to know that because there's so much anxiety around everything that's going on and what school might look like in the fall. So I feel like, you know, to everyone's point, it needs to be positioned very carefully that, you know, these, these things have a lot of moving parts, circumstances are changing rapidly, but in broad strokes, this is what we're thinking. And if it doesn't have a significant amount of detail, then I think that's okay, that can evolve. But, and that the school committee needs to approve it, we can put that out there as well.
And then it can, and then it can change even after your approval, right?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. But I think it's important even for parents to know what we talked about today. So intention today is kids on site for K through X and hybrid for seven to 12, probably not an every other week model. I think even knowing that could go a long way for starting to shape things for parents. And I guess my other question would be, or acknowledgement that I'm guessing the, the next round of surveys for parents and for teachers will go out shortly after that communication, then?
That's correct. You know, we, we're, we've kind of come down to realizing that we have a better shot of knowing the student intentions at this point than we do staff because there's so many unanswered questions for staff. Then, you know, there's an entire process going through, you know, the unions and associations that, you know, will be, we have been and will continue, I mean, we did today, in fact, continue to have conversations around that. But we know that if we know the, who's coming back by, from students, by grade level, by school, that's going to answer a lot of questions for us about how we plan and how we enter. Obviously, that can change, too, we know that. The other thing I just want to say, and I, and I truly appreciate and understand, and it's been very difficult for us to, to have these conversations and to work. I can't even begin to tell you the number of hours that have gone in this with, by so many people prior to even going into a steering committee for reopening. But, you know, we have, we have been really handcuffed, and I don't mean to be critical. But, you know, as of two weeks, as of this week, actually, the state was saying that the, we had to come up with a plan as to how we were going to go back to school for everybody, every grade level, every day. And that was the direction. And the discussion was, again, as early as last week, that got clarified this past Wednesday, that that was what we had to submit, that was the expectation of what we were going to go with. And if we told the department we couldn't, we couldn't do it, then the department was going to do some kind of analysis, come and do a team, some kind of team visit, that it was very much an approval process in terms of if you don't come back full day, every day, then you've got to prove to us why you can't do that. So, you know, that's been difficult to work within that, you know, that hanging over us because we never were in agreement with that to begin with. And we were never in agreement with working with a three-foot physical distancing. So, you know, we have been trying to kind of wait this out a little bit to see how things, and they've been changing weekly. We now believe we're in a place where what we say publicly is, you know, is both doable and where we've kind of landed in terms of our goals and priorities and what we value. So, and I know it's, you know, it has, it's, it's been tough not to hear anything, but I also have been really concerned about putting stuff out there that people might lock into, and then we're off answering questions on something that might not even have been doable, so.
Yep.
Sure.
Through the chair.
Yeah, I think we can completely appreciate that perspective. And there's not a, a single aspect of all of this that isn't insane. I mean, it's all just crazy. So, you know, we appreciate you guys working through that and, and the diligence. I guess my only point is trying to strike that balance between accuracy and, you know, getting the communications that people need, even if they're broad strokes. And I think we're all on the same page with that, especially as evidenced by the fact that you just said something will go to parents next week. So I think that's great. Did you have something, Mr. Kokors?
No, I just wanted to add, you know, and I think Dr. Hackett said it well. I think that, you know, the bottom line of all of this is we're going to make the best decision for kids in Braintree. We're going to obviously take the guidance and use it as it's intended to be used. But, you know, I, I feel confident that as a committee and as an administration, we're going to do the right thing for the students and teachers in Braintree first. So I appreciate that.
Great. Anything else on this topic? I'm sure we'll continue to discuss.
Through the chair.
Go right ahead.
Doctor, I've had parents ask me, I know this isn't even on the agenda or whatever, or close to what you're looking at. They've been paying on senior trips and stuff. I'd assume all overseas trips and field trips are pretty much canceled at this point, correct?
That's correct. And I think it would be very difficult for us to really do anything next year, even if things got better. As you know, there's a lot of fundraising and effort and time that goes into making those trips happen. You know, obviously, there's a ban on travel from a lot of countries. At this point, going into next year, we will not be doing field trips and we won't be doing class trips, if, you know, that could possibly change. But I don't see that in the foreseeable future at this point.
No, I was just asking because parents have been asking.
Right.
You know, going the overseas trips, they, they option to pay monthly, so.
Right.
I pretty much said, you know, I'd probably put that on hold because I don't see us going on field trips.
Correct.
All right, so in sports, what are we doing for sports? I don't see us having sports, especially football and the bigger sports for the locker rooms because that's going to be too close. And transporting them there and back, you know, there's going to be too many people on the bus. Are we canceling fall sports at this point?
So at this point, the guidance we've had from the MIA and the state is that fall sports will, nothing will start with fall sports earlier than, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's like September 15. The questions about what we are willing to participate in, even if it is approved, is a different question. But currently, there's been no, there's been really no decision on, on several sports, including football.
Well, when do we think we should make that decision? So the kids aren't going out to the captain's practice and practicing, and then all of a sudden you pull the rug out for one.
Right.
Which I believe we really shouldn't be, you know, being in closed quarters like that, but.
Right, right. So right now, the communications with Athletic Director Mike Denise, he and I have been talking pretty regularly. We're not, we've not, we're not sanctioning anything and really letting coaches know that they should not be, or captain's practices, those kinds of things should not be happening. We don't control town travel teams, and as you know, some of those teams are now, they are playing. We are concerned, obviously, about too much travel. We know already there's been a few cases of students, athletes becoming infected as a result of participation. So, you know, we, we can't control that component of it. But, you know, what I don't want to do is, is make a decision yet on individual sports until we know exactly what the state's going to do because they may make that decision for us. Everyone's in the same boat, so there's no competitive advantage in terms of when teams can start practicing. And I'm hopeful that within the next few weeks, the state will make some final decisions on what they're going to say can happen for actual sports.
Another, another subject item, if we do go back to school, I know nothing's been etched in stone yet. What are we going to do about our food for the free and reduced lunch programs? Because obviously, we can't have cars pulling up to the, the schools all the time, like, that's been happening at the two different schools, but. And we do have to take care of the kids that chose not, choose not to go back to school.
Right.
Have we given any consideration, like a central location? We could have that pickup and drop off besides the kids in school doing the, grabbing goes?
We, we have not decided at that level of detail where pickup locations would be or pickup times. As, as you know, we had two sites during the summer, likely because of federal funding, we might have to continue to use Ross and Hollis's sites. But we also went to providing multiple days breakfast and lunch meals in one pickup. So we've got, thanks to Sarah and her crew, got really good at doing that. So we might have to implement some kind of model like that where after all kids have, are gone, you know, we offer the service for pickup, or we do it early, early in the morning, and parents can come do it then, and they're picking up for multiple days, not just one day. But we're not at that level of detail. What we, what we do know is that we will provide meals for students both in school and students who are in hybrid model and also who are, have decided or are going fully remote.
Yeah, because, like, as you know, I live up the street from Hollis', and it's, traffic gets backed up pretty good.
It's going to be a major factor for us in terms of timing.
Yeah, I'm just worried about that, you know, the, the timing of it for even like the kindergarten, the half-day things. I don't want any kid getting run over, someone trying to get a grab and go, but we do have to provide that. Do we have any numbers of staff and students, I know it's early, but who are planning on staying home?
So we had, we did an initial survey that would really, just to get a, you know, kind of a rig, really generic picture of where people were thinking, we did that a few weeks ago. You know, I think, I think it was fairly similar break. I think, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're talking about 15% of students at that point?
Yeah, that, across the district, there's about 15% of families were considering not sending their kids back to school. Staff is a little bit higher than that, but relatively consistent.
So when we go out again next week on the surveys, what we will be able to offer is a lot more detail, which I think, you know, if, if some are saying no because they don't have enough information, which is completely understandable. So when we go out with the next surveys, we'll be able to give some very specific details around schedules and cleaning protocols and transportation that will give, you know, people the ability to make a more informed decision. At some point, likely, you know, first, second week in August, we really are going to have to have parents commit to the plan, understanding that, you know, there's certainly the ability to change later, but we really do need to have an accurate count, both staff and, and students coming in, you know, no, really no later than mid-August.
That's it, thank you. I, I had a whole list of things, but I forgot them, so I'll have to write them down.
Okay, but you know where I am.
I'm getting old. Thank you, doctor.
You're my eight, Cyril, don't say it.
Not the years, it's the miles, guys.
Lot of miles.
Okay, are we ready to move on to the draft revisions of the calendar?
Yes. So what I want to do, if everyone can see that now, the 2020-21 school calendar?
Yep.
Um, what I, I want to just work off of this because there are just so many decisions that have to get made. This is the actual approved calendar that we were going to go into next year with until everything happened with COVID. So a couple of things we're talking about. One, we are talking about bringing a calendar that only takes us through December for approval to the school committee within the next couple of weeks. We'll discuss it on, on Monday night if you move this forward. We just think that right now, we want to have the flexibility to adjust the second half of the year if, if we need to. And for obvious reasons, you know, we may be out of school and not able to count a day as a school day at all. In that case, we may need to think about February vacation and April vacations differently. We may get a peak that comes through, we may get hit hard with, with flu. We may want to close the building for, you know, for deep cleaning, often at certain points in time. In fact, also, just to talk through this, not in depth, but we're giving a lot of consideration to, to no school days due to the, the heat index. I mean, if you think about the last couple of days, and you think about a kid, being a kid and wearing a mask on the second floor of South Middle School, you know, we, we need to think about whether or not we call a half-day of, at that point, or we actually dismiss, you know, for the entire day, like a snow day, because it's just not tolerable. So we, we want to have that ability to adjust the second half of the year. How we're thinking about the calendar right now, we were going to have a teacher workshop day on the first of September. We were going to bring students in on the second, and then no school on the fourth. And of course, the seventh is the Labor Day, Labor Day. So now, we also know, of course, the state election is on, the, is it on the second? It's on the second as well. Our buildings will be used, three of our buildings will be used for that. Additionally, we think it's beneficial to, to go later than this current calendar allows for. We're thinking on potentially bringing students back no earlier than September 14, and maybe even possibly looking to September 21st. We can't really go much later than 21st because we do get into a challenge in terms of trying to schedule 175 student days and provide what really is seven professional development days through the course of the year, with the five, you know, less student days we have to provide now and our built-in two professional days, one of which we have to have on November 3rd for the, for the election. So right now, we're giving consideration to the 14th or the 21st, also recognizing that we would, it would be ideal and the right thing to do for us to get teachers in for a block of days prior to whatever day we decide to start. So for example, if we start on the 14th with students, you know, we, we could possibly consider scheduling four professional development days the week of Labor Day week so that teachers can get in, we can do the training, we can, you know, they can get the classroom situated, bring students in. What we kind of like about the 21st is it, it does push it out one more week, gives us a little bit more time to see how the virus is trending, try to maybe benefit from learning from the mistakes that other school systems around us might make. But it, it also gives us a little bit more opportunity to potentially look at, at doing some, call it soft opening, but actually running some buses, bringing some kids voluntarily to school, getting them into each school in a classroom for a period of time, just really kind of doing a dry run of, of how, how we're planning to set up. You know, that's a possibility. It also potentially gives us a little bit more time to work with staff as well. So on Monday night, what I'd like to do is bring both calendars, both a 14th day start and a 21st day start to the school committee for consideration. We will fill in some of this other time. For example, there's certain times during the year that we could take advantage of. We could actually go full remote with everybody on certain days. So as we look through the calendar and think about the benefit of having all students, you know, not be in the building so that we can both clean and just give the buildings a break. You know, it certainly makes some sense that we look at the, the November Thanksgiving week. I mean, we generally go a half-day on, on the Wednesday. We think that maybe going, taking that entire week off, having the first, those first three days be remote learning for everybody, either synchronously or asynchronously, might be a good time for us to kind of get everybody away from each other, give us a chance to kind of reflect on how we're doing. Jim has talked about scheduling at the high school or scheduling across the board. We know that at a certain point in this, in the school year, there's kind of an endpoint as to when we can, at the high school anyway, implement a more normal schedule or flip a schedule around at the high school level as we get into the second semester of the year. So I think it's a, we think it's a good chance to take a look at that. So I think it's a, we think it's a good chance to take a look at that. We also really, when you look at December, you know, we're already going to half day on the 23rd. Again, same scenario as Thanksgiving week, that we could bang, we could actually do remote, total remote learning or just take the days off and add them to the calendar and have a full two weeks off. And as we think about just the general normal flu season, for example, it might be beneficial to think about that as well. So our intent is to bring a calendar from September to December, be really clear about the fact that, you know, January for, through June won't be determined until maybe mid, late November, to the best of our ability to do that. We also are, you know, again, bringing the start date of the 14th or the 21st for students. The other thing I just want to mention is that if in fact, we, the state gets to a point or we get to a point where we say we have to go full remote, that we can't bring any students back, then our recommendation would be to keep this calendar as it is because it doesn't make sense, you know, for us to start too much later. We might need to take maybe a week or so, maybe not necessarily completely leave it as is, but maybe start a little bit later in order to get some staff training in on, on our technology. But, so that's our current thinking right now, you know, and then we can, if, if you're supportive of that, any input, feedback right now would be great. Wouldn't, we wouldn't necessarily be asking for approval by the school committee on Monday night, but at least this gets to our earlier points, this gets our, our current thinking out there with possibilities that are real.
Great, thank you. Oh, that makes a lot of sense and the idea of having those professional development days built in at the beginning of the year sounds great. And I also saw that there was a professional development offering about technology and tools that's out there right now that hopefully a lot of teachers are able to take advantage of in preparation for this too. So I'm really glad that we're doing that kind of stuff. Any comments or questions from the committee? Okay. Mr. Kukoris, did you want to give us a quick update on communication as well?
Sure. Do, do we need, Frank, are you looking for a vote to bring it to the full committee or are we good?
I think you're on mute.
I think Frank is.
Sorry, yeah.
That was, that was, that was very insightful. Thank you.
Yes, well, you know, I make more sense when I'm muted anyway. We're, I think we're good. I don't think we need a formal vote.
Okay, great, great. Then if, if it's okay, Madam Chair, I'll give an update on the communication that, discussion that we had a couple of weeks ago.
Please do.
So first, I want to thank Andrew for working with me. I know we had a good discussion around how we can make the school committee a little more visible, both on social media and on the, on the website and for communication. So Andrew and I met this week and we just talked a little bit about how we would execute that. And one of the things that we thought made a lot of sense is that we would, we would actually be a page from the school, the Braintree Public Schools page, which will make it a lot of, you know, we wouldn't be a standalone page, but we would be part of the Braintree Public Schools pages. And, you know, we can certainly use that presence to put agendas, minutes, updates, certainly subcommittee updates that we, you know, in the past have not done. And then other items of interest that relate directly to what the school committee does. You know, policy, education, finance and things like that. So Andrew, I'm just gonna give one other update and then Andrew will share his screen and just show you some examples of, of what that might look like and, and what it looks like today. So the other thing that we think might help streamline communication into the school committee, as we've had a lot of that recently. Right now, you can certainly go to the school website and click on the individual school committee members' names. And then you can, you know, communicate that way with us. But it is very difficult to communicate with the whole school committee in general. So what Andrew and I talked about is we would have another address that you could click on that would be Braintree School Committee and that would automatically feed out to each one of our individual emails. So there are times that people want to communicate individually, they have that option, but if they want to communicate to the whole committee, we will, you know, we will give them another option to just click on one link and go to all of our email, you know, as they would like. So those are the two things that Andrew and I talked about that we would like to move forward to the full committee for consideration. And with that, Andrew, I'll turn it over to you if you want to just share your screen and we can walk through some of the examples.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Kukoris. Good evening, everyone. So the, so we did discuss a few things this week. As was mentioned, so we are working on kind of a group email that will be able to go to everyone. We're also working on kind of expanding the current school committee's webpage to include more agenda items and be able to click links for future Zoom meetings and such right on that website. And additionally, I'm sharing right now the Town of Braintree's Facebook page. And so what we have on the, on the town side, this is one example, where the town has this committee called the Braintree Community Partnership on Substance Use. And so this is, it's almost a, a subpage of the town's Facebook page, Facebook calls them groups. So if I select that, you'll see that there's a group created there and you see that's owned by the Town of Braintree. So what we would love to do is set up a similar scenario where we have the Braintree Public Schools Facebook page and we have the subpage that's labeled the school committee. And we would look for some members of the school committee to be admins on that page, then they could maintain it and post to it. And I can show you a quick view of how this looks on a mobile device too. So this is the Town of Braintree Facebook page on Facebook, on the mobile app. If you were to select that page, then it brings you right into that subgroup. And so all these, these groups would be public. So typically, you may interact with some groups on Facebook that are private and you have to be accepted. So these would be wide open and anyone can join it. And also a nice thing about these groups is you can add topics as well. And so if there was, maybe you would have a topic for policy and education or finance and a resident or anyone that's a member of the group could select that topic and they'll see all the posts that are related to that topic. So it's pretty neat. So we, I think that the thinking is that this would go to the full committee for consideration. Then after that, if, if approved, we could mock this up and start to set it up.
Thank you, Andrew.
Yep.
So any, any questions from the subcommittee?
I think that looks great. I think as a best practice, we'll just have to make sure that all of the things we're posting link back to the site as opposed to hosting documents on Facebook itself or, you know, posting duplicative stuff there that we then sort of have to maintain in two places. So just as a practice, I want to make sure that we're driving everything back to the site as the, you know, the one source of truth for everything. But overall, I think this is a great idea and will definitely be very useful. So thank you for putting this forward. Any questions, Mr. Chief?
No, I think, I think Andrew does a great job and I thank him for it.
Okay, great. So I will entertain a motion to bring this communication plan to the full school committee on Monday.
So moved. Second. Whichever way you want to take it.
All right, great. We'll do our roll call vote. Mr. Kukoris?
Yes.
Mr. Chief?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so we will take that to the committee on Monday.
Thank you. Thank you again, Andrew.
Yeah, thanks, guys. That's terrific. So having concluded our agenda, I think we will entertain a motion to adjourn at this point and we'll reconvene on Monday at the full school committee meeting. And we can work offline to come up with our next date to meet as a policy and education subcommittee, maybe even around this day and time next week, but we'll figure that out. Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Sure.
I see a couple of attendees may have their hand up. I'm not sure if we're gonna entertain any public comment.
Oh, okay. Yes, thank you. Sure, let's go with Sue first. I don't think I can unmute Sue, but.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay, great. I just had a couple of questions. I know you're talking about the transportation. Now, what about kids who are on IEPs that are placed out of district? Has there been any discussion about how their transportation is going to be?
So there hasn't, this is Frank Aggins, Superintendent. There has not been a lot of communication about that yet. We would still need to follow the physical distancing guidelines that we would implement for all students. Obviously, we know that some of our transportation to out of district or date programs looks different depending on where students are going. The other piece of that is we don't yet know what some of the programs, the collaborators are even gonna do with the school day, whether they are planning to open, high, full open, hybrid or remote, so.
Yeah, I don't know either. My daughter's supposed to start school August 26th again, but I have, she just got out on the 17th, so there's not much time in between, so.
Right.
But I haven't heard too much.
Just stay in touch with, with our special education department and, because they, they would be made aware what schools are planning to do. And certainly contact the, the school directly as well. So what we're gonna do is just, we're gonna adapt and adjust to whatever, in terms of transportation, whatever the, the schools decide to do.
Okay. And other, other case managers available right now for the IEPs or?
You can get a message to them. You, you can contact certainly the special education department. If, if you can't get ahold of anybody there, you can email me directly or Mr. Lee, the Assistant Superintendent.
Oh, great, yeah, because I've tried, I've been trying to get ahold of, of that. I just haven't been able to. I didn't know, you know, with the summer and.
Yeah, they, they are out, so, but you know, many of them are answering emails or at least we can get some kind of answer for you.
Yeah.
On that, so, sure.
All right, great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to Vania Mauricio, please.
Hi, it's Vania Ashley. Can you hear me?
Oh, sorry, Vania. Yes.
It's okay. So the first thing, I just wanted to know as far as setup goes for the schools, have you guys started? I'm spacing out the desk and arranging the seating in the cafeteria.
We have done the initial look at how many desks we can get into each room. We have not begun moving because we have been waiting to hear, which we did on Wednesday, that, you know, we're gonna be fine to go with a six-foot social distancing. So that work will begin soon. We also have some rooms that have tables in them instead of desks that we will need to make some accommodations for and switch out. And we'll also be removing any furniture such as bookshelves, anything that is movable that is not required or necessary for instruction to provide more spaces within the rooms.
Okay, and emotional and academic support and resources, these kids are gonna need it throughout the, the year. Are we setting that in place? Do we know who's gonna lead this or have we even thought about it?
We have totally thought about it. We have the working group that is Special Education and Student Services. That is their focus, both special education and how we deliver services as well as social emotional supports, counseling, Title I services. So that group, that working team has had, is having full discussions around that right now as part of the group. And we will, you know, we'll, we'll be getting more information from them. We guess most of our key people are on that working team, so we will definitely have a, a plan in place for students who are in need.
Okay, so the free and reduced meals, my understanding is during COVID, that was allowed for everyone. So with that said, is that still gonna be allowed for everyone and what about the transportation fees as well? Are parents still gonna be held responsible for that, especially with a lot of people losing a lot of income right now? Are we still holding on to the transportation fee?
So until we make a decision on what we're gonna be able to do with transportation, we're holding on a determination on transportation fees, which is, as you know, are only at the upper levels. So we haven't made a determination on that yet. I don't have an answer for you on, on the grabbing go lunches in terms of how, who is eligible and who qualifies. Part of what we have to, to know and consider is what our funding sources look like. Sarah's done a great job getting as many grants as she can. We don't, I don't know for sure what the federal government is planning on for funding going into the school year for students beyond free and reduced.
Okay, so I understand next week you're gonna start sending out notices about the survey, et cetera. I'm also requesting that we also make sure that we, you're checking in with these families, sending out notices to see if they have all the resources and tools for the students to succeed. That's one thing I'm asking, that wasn't mentioned if, when you guys are gonna do that. But I think if that's handled as soon as possible, it'd be very beneficial for the students.
I, I, yes, as we did in the spring, we reached out to families and we already know many of the families who will need some support. But yeah, I mean, that, that would be part of our communication out to parents.
Yeah, so also I've started mentoring a few of your students in, in Braintree Public Schools. So they've all shared to me that they, of course, they all feel alone and they don't feel that they have the support. And of course, these are all students of colors. So one request that I've had is a, a club for a Muslim student union and a black student union. And they're requesting that a teacher lead these unions. I don't know if you have a Muslim teacher. I don't know if you have a teacher of color that can lead the black student union, but this is what these students are asking for. So these meetings can be done by Zoom. I'm, I'm meeting with them in person, of course, with their parents' permission, but this is what they're requesting because of course they feel alone in the schools and this has to change.
So.
This has to be one of the things that has to be done now.
So this is deviating a little bit from the topic here of the Policy and Education Subcommittee. So we certainly, you know, welcome your input. I'd request that you put it into writing and send that to us via email because, you know, we're trying to keep this on topic for.
Absolutely. I just wanted to put that in there for them because I did promise the girls yesterday when I seen them that I was gonna do that. So I just wanted to let that be known so that they can know that I held my end of the bargain and I promised them and I took care of that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so with that, I don't see any other hands raised, so let us, at this point, please make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll do our roll call. Mr. Kukoris?
Aye.
Mr. Chief?
Aye.
And I vote aye. This meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Next week.